HR, their report.
Okay. Okay, Ryan Delmap, HR Director. I'll get as, I'll try and make this as fast as possible, but let me know if you have extra questions. I'll go ahead and start with just our health and safety stuff. So, the biggest incident, of course, is the pipe break at the sheriff's. I was on the phone yesterday with ICRMP and HAL and, yeah. And they, I believe you're already aware, we've done what we needed to do to shore up the wall for the health and safety emergency, right? And so, now, we're at a point where it's more of the long-term fix kind of stuff. So, ICRMP works with an engineering firm that they like, that's kind of more broad and encompassing, that can do all aspects of a project. And so, they are gonna meet with HAL and a group of us, Levi, Friday morning, 10 o'clock. And we'll bring Mr. Bastian as well. And we're gonna just kind of make, sit down and make a game plan over there at the sheriff's. So, we'll take a look at it, and then we'll go talk in the conference room about moving forward from here. The one firm that did the foam to support the wall, they gave us an invoice. Christie, I don't know if you've got it yet, but we were thinking of taking our $2,500 deductible from that.
I think it's, yes.
Okay.
It was in the basket, which we need to, when you're only paying a partial like that, we need to make note that the insurance company's gonna pay the difference, because we don't normally short pay invoices.
Okay.
But I just saw it really quickly, so I hadn't had a chance to jump on there.
Yeah, Josh usually does, if he didn't, we'll, I'll talk to him about that. So, so that's the plan. So, the insurance will be covering, and they've gotta get their, since it's such a big claim, they've gotta get their...
They'll have an engineer come and take a look at it.
Their engineer, and their, the insurance that covers the insurance, right?
Yep.
Is gonna be looking at it. So, that's that. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay. Otherwise, we've had a couple slips and falls, a couple workers caught, but everything's pretty small in comparison. And we met as a safety committee yesterday, and kinda went over those and talked about them. I could send you a list, if you'd like, of all of the instances that we've had for the month. I gave Jeff a list of those when he met 101 with me earlier this week.
So, send them to us individually?
So, what was kind of the overall root cause of slips, trips, and falls? People not paying attention, moving too fast, doing things they shouldn't be doing?
No, they were in different locations. Usually, one was in a locker room, just missed the light, slipped and fell. The other person just slipped on some water and just fell. And it's, um, yeah, I mean, they're isolated.
Do we have the good four-hour-long death-by-PowerPoint video about slips, trips, and falls, and taking your time, and using three points of contact when moving in areas that footing might not be adequately available?
I haven't set that up yet, sorry.
So, we really need to get some of that, so, because the biggest reason why you wanna slow down and pay attention, it's not because you're gonna get hurt, but you're gonna sit in front of a very painful four-hour-long PowerPoint video that you really don't wanna sit in front of. Just saying, it's kind of a...
But on the topic of health and safety, so, what we did, one of the things the county really needs is just a foundational health and safety program. We don't even have the basic, basic program, right? And so, I've been using a template and guidance from OSHA, and I've created a first draft of this. And the component elements of it is gonna be, you know, management participation, employee participation, identifying health and safety risks, controlling the health and safety risks. There's a component where I wanna, it'll be like the emergency plan, as well as like the follow-up and evaluation. And the way I see this in my mind, and I wanted to talk to you about it, is we have Wes as the emergency director, creating an emergency operations plan for the county, which is a larger scope, which will include other agencies, right? This plan is just for us and our employees, right? This program's just for us and our employees. And a component of it, too, will be like what Captain Ballard has worked on with the emergency program. So, it'll be, the emergency program will be a piece of this overall health and safety program, which again flows into the bigger emergency operation plan that Wes is creating. That's the direction I wanted to head with it, and wanted to know what you think of that.
Just, even though we...
Captain Ballard is an advisor, not a director of it.
Yeah. Is there anything in your health and safety program, when you're referencing, you can reference OSHA, but because we are a local municipality, we don't follow OSHA?
Right.
So, we need to be very clear about that. We are not, we are not...
OSHA, MSHA?
Yep, OSHA, MSHA, all that stuff, we don't, we don't deal in that realm. But what we do is some of their best practices, just make sure that whenever we publish those into manual, that it's not...
Well, they, they...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Because people have this thing that, that, well, it's an OSHA rule that you're violating. No, we don't follow, we don't follow into, into those realms, and that's just something that we wanna make sure of, because while we want to make sure safety is at the top of our list, there are things in OSHA and MSHA that make governmental organizations almost impossible to operate sometimes, so...
Well, they have some good templates and examples.
They do, they do, yes.
And I am pulling from that.
Yep.
But I do understand, thank you.
Yep.
So, okay.
So, your safety committee and that is the one that are gonna lead on this.
That's right. So, we have on the safety committee Paula Turner, who was working closely with Captain Ballard, and they, they're kind of developing some resources, but in the end, it's gonna be a piece of it they will recommend to you, so... Because I'm trying to have a diverse group of people that are interested on that.
That's good.
Yeah. So, as far as health and safety, that's a big piece of that. Other things that we're working on, we have another category of HR is the ADA, FMLA, and workers' compensation piece. We haven't had a whole lot of new cases, but there's a lot of like old ones that still require maintenance and cleaning up. And your office just gave us two doozies this week that I've been working on since early in the morning. But we have a couple employees who have used up all their accrued vacation and sick leave, all of their FMLA eligible leave, and they're just riding that fence of using the leave as they use, as they accrue it. And so, we're addressing these situations this week. So, one of them's, we're gonna have to send, we've partnered with Port of Occupational Health to be a preferred provider, we're gonna send one of those employees there for a fitness-for-duty as part of the process. So, I think our policies and procedures are pretty solid, as far as that goes right now. So, I'm feeling really good about that area. The other area that I've been working on is the classification and compensation for foundational work for the next budget year. I did get a group together to help with a job family description for administrative generalists, and we're working on that job family. There's a dozen others that I'm working on as well, as fast as I can, as well as trying to get good quality, so we can have standards and distinctions for how we place people in grades. So, that's, that's a project I'm working on, making some progress on.
And on that, I'd like an update every month. I don't want you to get so far one way that we don't agree with or something.
Okay.
So, I want, I want an update fairly regular, so that we're talking about that, and we're all on the same page as we go.
And if you'd like, I could send you some drafts that I've created, so you can see an example of what I'm working on with that. So, I've got several families done already.
Okay, yeah, I just, we need to know, so that, because it's such a big part of budget and everything else that's going on, so I would really like us to be not in the middle of it, but on the side, so we're still in the loop.
Yeah, and I'm hoping to have those descriptions done by November, and then be able to analyze our positions using those. And we've kinda did a halfway job this year, and I think it'll be a more solid job of it this coming fiscal year, as well as, I've got a, I could show you an external analysis that I've kinda phased to, what I gave you before, just kind of beefed up and, and a little better for this next round. That's, I was thinking of waiting for other counties to provide information on their salaries for this new fiscal year, and then send that.
They won't have that till, I think, December, January. That'll be too late.
So, maybe I'll do what I have now, then.
And it's good to compare with other people, but I'm not that interested in comparing with everybody else. What can we afford, and what can we do?
Sure.
That's the basis of where we're gonna be.
Sure.
I mean, we can look at every other county and stuff, but if we're not...
We always know Bonneville County's gonna be more than us in certain areas. We always know Twin Falls will have certain areas, because, and the problem is, is they, like, their public works, they don't have the same functions as we do, because they have, they're, they deal with their landfill and roads and other stuff.
Well, and the highway districts.
And the highway districts, they have four of them in one county.
Yeah.
And so, that's why, that's why I say is, we have some weird kind of things, and we're always gonna be outpaid usually by Bonneville County, because Bonneville County just simply has more money than we do. That's just how they work. And so, like I said, I'm more with, more with, I mean, yeah, you can use them for some base reference points, but I'd more so just say, hey, don't, don't hold yourself hostage.
Well, I look at, we worked real hard for 7% this year.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's the max we could do, I mean...
That's it, I mean, that was it.
Sure. Well, and I think it, it, the way I set this up is I broke the, the jobs up into groups and families, so we can kind of see, well, in this area, we're looking for consistently within a range, right? But maybe this group of jobs were out of, out of the norm, right? So, good information will give you good opportunities to make good decisions, right? So, I'll get you some of that information here before the year's over, so, to help with the next year's budget.
Okay. Kyle, do you have a comment?
Let's go on with what Commissioner Kelly said is, also is versus us against other counties is exactly, like he said, what are these positions doing? What are our positions doing, not what their positions are doing? So, to me, we really need to, whether it's HR coming to these departments or whatever, is find out exactly what these positions are doing, not the person, not the name of what they're doing, what, what are they doing?
Well, we've asked for job descriptions since I've been here.
And we have them, but we're, I think, especially with all the turnover, we've been keeping them pretty up to date.
Well, and they're getting better, that's the whole thing. So, when I first came here, there were some of the job descriptions that hadn't been updated in 20 years, there's others that have been updated fairly regularly, because of the turnover. And then there's others that, even though with the turnover, they just never really up... Well, we know the job description says this, but really, we have them doing this.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to update every time we post, before we post, so...
So, we are getting better, it's just...
It probably wouldn't hurt to, to make sure, before you get too far in the process, to get ahold of all the department heads and make sure that their job descriptions are current?
Yeah, that's part of the process.
Because otherwise, you're gonna be going based on old job descriptions.
Oh, yeah, that's part of the process.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been doing that.
That's good.
Okay.
Good, good.
So, do you want me to take a break from this for a little bit, and go into the other thing?
Is anybody else coming?
No, I think it's just these guys.
How much do you have?
I could wrap things up pretty quick, actually.
Go ahead and finish it.
So, we are recruit, you know, still heavy in recruitment, you know? We've got between 20 and 30 recruitments, or postings right now, using the Tyler system. Applications are still coming in slow, and, and we, though, it seems like we're always getting a, for most positions, we're always getting a few, and, and we've been able to make some, some good hires and some, so, but recruitments, it hasn't really changed much from last month, it's still tough. And then, just kind of some other things, I did make a job offer to an intern, and it looks like everything's going well, she should be able to start August 29th. So, looking forward to getting some help with that. We did get 100% on our ICRMP trainings, so that was a big push and a big thank you to everybody.
So, everybody gets their raise.
So, yeah, it, I believe the calculation was about a $35,000 on the discount, was that?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
I don't get that paperwork unless you tell me.
Okay, so, that's, we got a 6%, which turned out, so that's pretty, that's as high as we could get. So, pretty excited about that. This may be another meeting, but I did do a training on performance evaluations last month, and got a lot of feedback from that. There's a lot of anxiety with starting that. We have a process set up, a form set up, ability to be flexible with departments on that, but definitely gonna need a lot of support from elected officials and department heads if this is gonna work.
That evaluation is tied to your families, it's tied to wages anymore.
Yeah.
Completely. And if people don't wanna do evaluations, or people won't get raises either. I mean, that's, that's how serious it is to me.
Okay. And when I was doing the training, my communication was, it's not like you're gonna get a certain numerical score on your evaluation, and we're gonna base a percentage of pay based on that. We're not going down that road, but we do need to demonstrate that employees, you know, are being held accountable for their performance, and the, a lot of that performance evaluation is, it's not so much like a test where you get a grade, but it's more formative to help encourage improvements and motivate and do that kind of, that's the way it was developed, so...
And I kinda talked to you a little bit, in my own mind, I see it that if we give a 5% increase, that there's a 2% across the board, and the supervisors have the control of the other 3%.
Well, and there's a lot of those, as soon as you start going down that realm, that's why you have to have those, you have to have those accurate job evaluations, counseling. I mean, and everybody wants to talk about how, how hard it is, or blah, 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 but I'm getting reviewed right now by my boss in the Army, and I'm in the middle of helping write my evaluation, and, and that's that whole thing, and setting goals and objectives for next year and what we're gonna do, so it can be done, it just might take a bit.
Hello?
So, more discussions to come on that.
Yeah.
I'm also working on a standard operating procedures where I'm compiling along with one document. And I'll be presenting that for approval once I'm a little further along with that, should be soon. And then, updating the overall manic personnel policy, I've sent that out for some feedback. Christie just gave me some good feedback today on it, but that's in the works, and I'd like to be sending that soon, to make those changes effective October 1. Yeah. And so, that's the main updates for my...
And we have an elected officials meeting, plus a supervisory meeting right after that, scheduled here the next few weeks or something.
Coming up.
Supposed to be coming out, she sent out a deal to the elected officials, seeing what day matched up for them, so after.
Okay.
We'll talk with Christie, and this is some of the stuff we'll talk about at that time, too.
Okay. And I could definitely share a draft of the updates that I'm proposing before then, so if people want to comment or talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, that's basically it.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and let's talk about the on-call.
This discussion began during budget season, when Matt had some concerns with, with his folks about on-call pay and things like that. He presented a potential solution to Braden about at a budget time, and I asked him to hold off on that because of the things we were working on, and I felt like it was a bigger discussion with several other departments. So, today is kind of that initial thing to start talking about on-call, how it impacts the different departments, who's, who's using it, or who wants to use it, all of that kind of stuff. Ryan and I chatted about it very briefly the other day. You got anything else to add to that, Ryan?
Yeah, I think a lot of this came up from questions from, from Matt and Abby, right? Specific to their situations, and so, we've been talking about it, shooting around some ideas, and just in general, so we're just kinda starting from the same place. On-call pay is, is one of those things where it falls under the Fair Labor Standards Act, and whether we're required to pay or not depends on how much we're controlling the individual's ability to, you know, to leave, to go out and, and use their time as they want to, right? So, if LSA does not give a very black-and-white specific, you know, this is paid, this isn't, so we just kind of have to be a little bit careful with, so far, our on-call has always been unpaid. But if we start really controlling the, an employee, how, where they have to be, how far away they have to be, how quick they have to respond, then we're gonna start getting on a little bit of thin ice with that, so we just need to be careful. So, that, that's kind of the foundation of where that rule is, so...
Okay. And you've had some discussions, we haven't had much.
Yeah.
Have you, do you have plans on how you work on-call presently, what your goals are and stuff? I mean...
Matt and I have talked a little bit, and Matt has a proposal. I don't know, I haven't really talked to anybody else about what their thoughts are, so if we want to start with Matt and...
Sure. So, our probation officers, by law, are required to be on-call 24/7, 365, every day of the year. And what we do is, we rotate primary on-call probation officer on a weekly schedule, so that we rotate through, every probation officer knows they could get called any night, but we try to have all, most of the calls flow through that on-call probation officer. Years ago, we used to schedule them in the office, for 36 hours on the week they were on-call, and then they had four hours floating that they could deal with on-call things, which would be after-hours and on weekends. We got to the point where a lot of the on-call stuff we had to do, we could just handle over the phone, so our staff could be pretty much anywhere, as long as they had access to cell service. And so, it really didn't require us to have them remain, you know, in the community and things like that. We've gone through some changes with the new judge. It's gonna require our staff to submit more paperwork in order to respond to law enforcement's calls with kids who are on probation who have been cited, or kids who are on probation who have committed significant probation violations that we need to look at potentially placing in detention. Our staff are gonna have to have access to Internet, they're gonna have to have access to their computers. So, I think they're still gonna be able to travel, it's just that the activities and things that they would have done, that they used to do, are gonna be reduced. They're going to need to be kind of tethered to their computer while they're on-call. So, what I, what I had brought up as an idea, because we don't have funds to pay our staff for those on-call hours, was to schedule them for 30 hours in a week. There'd be 10 hours that they would get credit for to deal with on-call issues. So, if that week they use 10 hours of on-call, then that would be their 40 hours. If that week they had five hours of on-call work, they would still get credit for the additional five, because they were available to take calls, and, and we had somewhat reduced where they could go and what they could do during those on-call hours, so... So, that was the idea that I proposed, but...
And how frequently would they have those weeks where they do that?
I would say that it's been a long time since we've had probation officers have to go 10 hours of on-call work, but this, again, we're into a new process, whereas most of it was just, we can handle this over the phone. Now, we're gonna be filing paperwork that night, you know, contacting the judge, getting paperwork to detention, but my guess is, and it's really hit and miss, so there's a lot of inconsistency, because you could go a week with one or two calls, and it's one hour, and you could go a week where you have five or six calls, and it's eight hours. But I don't think we would hit 10 hours very often, I'd say that'd be rare. When we hit 10 hours, it's when law enforcement calls, and we go assist, we go out and ask them to assist us in a search, because of the high community risk that's involved. And so, that's where probation officers tend to get their more on-call hours, is they do go out with law enforcement on-call to do home search. If kids have been involved in an offense where there's a gun, and we think we know where that gun is, we're gonna ask law enforcement to help us search, and the on-call officer or another probation officer will go out and assist with that.
Why did you choose 10 hours as opposed to like five?
It's a great question. I think when we found that, you just have to be, now they're gonna have to be available after-hours and on weekends, more than they were before. So, I think there's a chance they're gonna use up their five hours from time to time, and then they're gonna still have to be available the rest of the week or the weekends.
But they'll be available to do as they choose? They won't be tied to, they won't have to be at home, sitting, right? They can still be responsive?
They still have to be where they have Internet, where they have access to their computers. We've gotta look up case numbers through IJOS, so they can't just do this over their phone. IJOS is on our computers, and that's where we're having to get the case numbers for the affidavit and the detention order.
So, just a question for you, because you said we've had to change a judge, and now the new judge wants us all done, this way. So, we're gonna just follow some issues here. So, we have a change, if a judge has decided to do something that now is going to cause a repercussion in his secondary and tertiary effects, is going to cause a lot more cost and burden onto the county of county employees without maybe a dis- conversation here with us? Because this is my problem right here, is that's great, Judge, that you wanna do this, however, comma, you're asking us then to, and I don't care with paying for on-call stuff, but if we're just making things more difficult, or changing things, or doing stuff, you are causing a constitutional issue, because a judge does not have the authority to budget and spend county funds. You guys do not work for the judge, you are not judge employees, you are employees of the county. And so, the problem I have with that is, is if we're just gonna change a process all of a sudden, and making, well, why, I mean, I mean, maybe it's a better process, maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but why all of a sudden are we doing something that is this, is this, was there a reason why the system prior was not working?
I think from a, from a standpoint of, you know, if we're gonna request a youth to go to detention, there should be an affidavit, and, and in the past, what we would do is say, here's verbally what the reasons are, in other words, this is the affidavit why we're requesting this, and then we would file that in the morning. Now, we're gonna be filing that in the moment, and requesting and doing the detention order, and so...
So, can you write that affidavit on a napkin with a crayon, and take a picture of it, and call it good? Because this is the problem where we start talking about efficiency, effectiveness, and, and where we're really talking about, was there a legal reason why the prior system wouldn't work in a verbal affidavit?
I think the, the new judge is comfort level with the old process, but he didn't have that same comfort level. I can't write an affidavit on a napkin, because I have to access case numbers, because each affidavit has to have a case number. In order to access that case number, I have to get into IJOS, which is not web-based right now. So, if I'm someplace where I have Internet, however, our IT people have done a great job...
We can beep in, we can beep in.
Right, getting us into where we can do that now, which helps, but you're still, you're still gonna have to have your computer with you.
Well, so this is my question then, is, so we're starting to have on-call people then, that we're gonna on-call, call you in, and so this is a whole, like, just 'cause this judge, I'm not comfortable with this, well, that's great, there was another judge that did this for 30 years here. And so, obviously, it is a practice that is customary in other areas, and so this is something, just in your own area alone, that just kind of red flags and makes me go, hey, Judge, so who's gonna come up with that? Because that kind of makes me mad here, because, all right, you guys really need a computer, you need stuff, so, okay, those on-call guys, whoever it is, should have a laptop, should have the abilities to where you're not necessarily coming in at night. You should have the ability then to have that done, so who's paying for the technology upgrades? Is the court system paying for the technology upgrades? Or is the county footing the bill for the, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, is, I think for this specific one, we need to have a conversation with the judge and the ADJ, and basically say, hey, you wanna do this, this is great, where are we getting the money? Because there's a whole nother thing, and the staff, the burden it's gonna put on your guys' staff then. How bad was it when you're on-call and you can do it over the phone? How bad was it when you're on-call and you can do it over the phone, and now you're saying, hey, we're going to get you up at night, we're going to make you come down, we're going to make you fill all this out, do all this, and you're going to have to do this here? And then you can go home? You want to talk about retention of people? How many other counties and districts are going to do it that way? What does Bonneville County do? What, or, you know, what's it?
That's a different discussion than what we're here for, real quick. So how are you guys dealing with?
Just one second, before we get there. What's your schedule for you guys now? What do they work?
Our staff works four tens, so they either work a Tuesday through Friday, or they work a Monday through Thursday.
So you cover the full week?
Mm-hmm.
And as we're talking about this, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking five-day work weeks of eight hours a day, and like every other Friday off, something. I mean, there's the nine, there's the nine eight-
Nine eight.
Nine eighties, eights, nine eights, whatever. And where people rotate Fridays off and stuff like that. I'm just, I'm just thinking out of the box right now of how to- because what their schedules are is part of the conversation too.
So Commissioner, we, for the majority of our staff that are probation officers, we'll rotate every six months. So you'll have either Tuesday to Friday for the six months, and then you're going to go Monday to Thursday the next six months. So we do rotate them. Some staff have stayed Monday through Thursday. Our intensive supervision staff stay Monday through Thursday. So they're off every Friday right now. But again, they take calls on Friday, they do come in to meet with people, just to be accommodating.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, maybe five eights and every other Friday off. And that's your on-call is the eight hours that you're off on the other Friday.
The big thing and the benefits and why some of the wages don't, aren't, is because people have every, they have a four-day work week. And that's your benefit, that's your cost benefit. Some people are willing to take a lower wage because they have every Friday off. Or Monday, or, you know, however that works, you have a four-day work week.
The four tens help us.
Four tens, it works with the retention law.
I'm just throwing out here, as we're talking about the whole picture, we're talking about schedules too.
If I could go back, my question before of how frequently? So how frequently are they, that primary on-call? Is it like once every month, or once every?
I think we rotate through 10 staff, 10 or 11 staff, so it's about every 10 weeks.
So it's not that frequently when they're going to do that?
But still, it's one of those things when they're there. Especially if we're making, you know that you're going to have to get up in the middle of the night, and you're going to have to go somewhere. That's where I-
So let me clarify then. You're talking about one, the one person having the 10 hours a week? And not, not all 10 people? Okay, okay, that's-
Once every ten.
So that on-call staff for that week, and again, Commissioner, our hope is to make this as convenient as possible. There's certainly time, there's expense tied up in time. IT's been a huge help, they, you know, and that takes time. So I don't want to say this doesn't cost anything. But we're not asking for an increase in the budget, but there is expense, of course, related to that, and I understand that. But technologically, we're where we need to be for now.
Well, that gives me a different picture, because I was picturing, picturing all your staff.
I thought all 10 had to be, I was like, are you insane? I was ready to, I was ready to lose my marbles, man. You want all 10 guys on, not only working 40 hours a week, but to be on-call, another 10? Are you insane? I was ready to have a-
Okay, I got a different picture than what I had originally.
I apologize, I wasn't more clear.
I was like, you're doing what?
We thought we'd try 20 if we're all 10. No, just that staff who's on-call would be for the hour week, and it would just rotate through, so whoever's on-call.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I'm getting a different picture than I had.
Cost just isn't, and this is the other thing too that irritates me, is it's not just a monetary cost that I'm referring to. We have that work-life-family balance of employees, we have a cost of doing business. And the cost is not always monetary. And that's the thing, is everybody has actions, and when they do these things, that's why, okay, so if we're paying these things or doing these things, it's fine, but why is it making sense?
So I would just tell you, you know, I'm not the lawyer here. But when a judge says from a legal process, I think we're more consistent doing it this way. I've got to do it that way, but he's, in this case, you know.
One of those courtrooms might not get remodeled this year, but that's okay.
But I think, I think he has good basis for a good reason.
Okay.
And so I think that, I will tell you that one of the things that we deal with on-call is law enforcement can't arrest and bring people to detention on a misdemeanor or felony if they're adult, unless they've witnessed it, I believe is what the legislation is. However, juveniles are considered different because they're not charged with crimes. But some law enforcement agencies are still applying that same standard, which is we're not going to bring a high-risk kid to detention if we didn't witness the crime. So the way they do that is they call us, we file an affidavit saying they violated their probation by getting into offense, and then asking the judge to place them in detention on a probation violation. And to do that, we need an affidavit, we need case numbers, and then we need the detention order, because law enforcement's not going to bring them unless they can sign a detention order. And so we've got to have that stuff available for them. So, yeah, it's hard to know, Christie, it's hard to put the hours, but, you know, and checking that some places compensate people like a dollar an hour for every hour they're on-call. If they don't get a call, and then if they get a call, you know, then it goes to the regular wage or the time and a half, or whatever it's going to be. But we just don't have that money in the budget. And so Commissioner, as you brought up, this does affect families, it affects what you can do. Granted, it's every 10 weeks, we go. So I'm trying to find a way that how do I compensate them fairly for having-
And we used to do something similar to that with prosecutors, because prosecutors used to, because prosecutors have an on-call attorney. The difference is they're exempt, so they really shouldn't get paid.
Yeah.
But we did have a policy on that. I can't remember if we had a policy on public works. I don't think we've ever addressed on-call the sheriff's office, and they probably have the bulk and the most restrictions.
Yeah, we have the most, and we've never received.
Okay. We're very limited on our time. We have an appointment at 11 o'clock over at ISU, so, and I have another group behind you. So I'm going to give each of you a few minutes to talk about what your thoughts are. And then we're just at the beginning stages of this. And then we'll have a time period later when we have more of a plan and come together.
Because we need some form of consistency.
Yeah.
And then also, we forgot to invite Abby, adult probation, so she should probably be involved if they have on-call also.
Can I start? I'm already a little bit late for another meeting.
Oh, okay, go.
So my, I have 10 people on my on-call pool, they're part-time employees. We don't require them to like be available all the time. We just go from that pool, and if we have an emergency, or we have a sick staff that's full-time, we just call those on-calls, and hopefully one of them can come in. So we're not requiring them to, you know, be available. We just hope they are, and we have enough, you know, part-timers, hopefully. Right now, we're kind of short, but if we're fully staffed, we have enough people. You know, hopefully one of them can come in. For the most part, we've been able to do that. If we don't have somebody to come in, we will call full-timers. They're required to be on-call, kind of like how Matt described. But it's extremely rare that we ask one of those guys to come in when it's not during their scheduled time. And if they do have to come in, we just take their time off of when they're scheduled. So they, they won't have to work extra hours.
So he uses comp time.
Yeah, so we don't really have the, you know, you're required to be around. We do ask them to let us know if they're going to be on vacation, so that we don't have like all of them gone at the same time. But that's pretty much all we do for our on-calls. And if we need to reclassify what they're called, you know, moving forward, then we could easily do that too, so.
And their comp time's at one and a half?
They don't have comp time.
I mean, you said, no, you said the full-time people when they come in.
The full-time people, we're just going to take, they won't work part of their normal scheduled shift later on. If they have, like, they'll still just do a, they're on the 207K schedule, so they have to be 86 hours.
So that week, they compensate. Okay. So it isn't really a comp time compared to, it's just a change of hours, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
Just to be, just for clarification, I'm just looking for a solution for adjusting the schedule for the on-call person, that's that primary on-call person each week, not all our staff. And my initial proposal was trying to be as fair as I could, 10 hours. They work their full 10, and that would be it. But if they don't, they would still claim the rest of that time because they had to be available to take those calls, so. And there is some limitation still, but they're not required to be in town at their home. And they may not be required to even come into the office, so.
So I just got kind of thrown into this.
He's like, oh, Jesus.
Obviously, in the role of the sheriff's office, you know, we have people that are responding to serious felony crimes and to critical incidents. So there are people, like our detectives, that are required to be on-call, and they have to, they have to stay within the county. They can't, they can't leave the county because they have to be able to respond to those serious crimes. We also have an element of people that aren't required. I mean, basically, we have a lot of people, we have SWAT teams, we have our administration that's also going to be responding to critical incidents. But those aren't people that are required to be here in the county at that time. The only ones that are going to be required to be in the county and that are required to be on-call and be in the presence are detectives, which is going to be one detective a day, and then one detective on the weekends on a rotating basis. Our people in the, in the jail staff that call the bubble, because you know that we're shorthanded in the jail. So we have to have individuals on-call, in case somebody calls in sick, that we can bring somebody in, and so we can cover those shifts, the minimum mandatory that we have to have in the jail. And we have our two maintenance guys that are on a rotating call basis. And as you can see, that's turned out to be a pretty important thing, as Vincent we just had in the jail. We're, you know, we're, you know, honestly, I'm, we're really good at the police stuff and doing critical incidents when life's in danger, but, you know, when a boiler room gets all damaged and stuff, that's really not my forte, so it's nice to, you know, have that person on-call.
You didn't want to get down in there and-
Yeah, I don't know, you know, turn off this pipe and that pipe, and so forth and so on. But it really would be nice, I mean, I can tell you, I was a detective for 18 years. I never received any compensation, but it would be nice to get compensation on those times when you are required to stay in the county. I mean, it affected me and my family, I mean, I couldn't do anything. I could, the weekends I was on-call as a detective, and I had to stay in town, okay? And I'm a huge outdoors guy, and I like to spend my free time out climbing mountains in different areas. But it would be nice to see some compensation for these people that are required to be here. And I get it, those ones that, you know, we can, we can cover them if they are gone and they get called out. I don't, you know, we'd be okay in those areas.
How many do you have, when you're on the bubble in the jail, how many are on the bubble, do you remember?
I think it's three.
That seems right.
Yeah. And I think you're on two or three.
That's per shift.
Per shift, correct.
And this is another area where I want, I want your plan put together. And then we'll have another meeting, and we'll talk about it.
But I know we've talked about plans in the past, but I didn't come to this meeting with a plan.
No, you're fine.
Because I know we've kind of-
This is just to kind of give us all the broad picture of what it looks like across the county.
Okay, Scott?
So we have a couple of staff members that work together to respond. Not really respond, but to come in after-hours and open horse stalls, RV parks, that kind of stuff. And so depending on how busy we are during the summer, those guys can be hopping after-hours. Currently, we work a flex schedule, and so if they come in and we have the ability to flex them off, then we flex them off. If they don't, if we don't have the ability to do that, then they get comp time. That's not as cool as these guys.
Not of all of you, all your, all your employees are hourly?
Yes.
Nobody on salary?
Well, three of our on-call staff, as we rotate through, are exempt. So there's three of us that take a week of on-call, or that are in that rotation, they're exempt. So seven are, seven, I believe, seven would be unexempt, they're not exempt.
Those exempt employees are expected to be there all time anyway, anyway.
So that's really all it is, is, and every now and again, we'll have like an emergency that comes up, and we'll just send whoever we can to get down there, so.
But while we're talking about exempt, exempt employees also have the ability to take time off when they want to, do what they want to do also. So that is already their prerogative, so, all right.
Same kind of situation as all these. We have people that are on-call, but we have enough of them that we don't, they don't have to stick around. We can, and this is what I'm talking about, like snow plowing. There is incidences where I have, I try to use my salary people as much as possible. There is sometimes I have an hourly rate person that has to stick around the phone for the weekend, like in the snow season. Only have a little bit of that in the snow season. One of our biggest things is probably the gas system. We have five people that rotate, so every fifth week, that week they're on-call. It's sporadic, it's hard to know what, it's usually in the middle of the night when they have, and they have to be a certain distance away because, especially when we turn two generators on, we're going to be supplying quite a bit of the power to Pocatello and Chubicon here. So we have to get there to get things turned back on, and they have to notify auto power. There's quite a few steps to that to get it back on. Them ones are probably my more concern right now of, because of them having to stay at a certain distance and be available. The other ones, we work things out to where if we call one and they're not there, we call another one, but they have to, they have that more freedom.
So do you have a flex schedule with the others? So you already work a flex schedule also to compensate people?
We just don't, on them ones for the generator, we don't do anything right now for them, they're just on-call.
But they, do you have the ability to have them on a flex schedule?
Yeah.
We have a little bit of overtime money in there too, that you used to-
We normally just pay overtime for that because we've been still low-staffed, but it's hard to take days off also.
Okay.
But we have, we have funding for overtime.
But I think what we're talking about is more of a full-staffed process and plan. And when we're down on staff, that's a different situation to me than, than making a county policy or procedure for compensating people if they're on a, on call.
Between either if they're getting paid, or they're getting comp, or time off, my biggest thing is that it's the same.
We have no consistency, right?
Yeah, that would be the consistency thing.
Well, there you go. Touche.
You get, you get called in because you document your time.
That's what we'd have to come up with an idea of whether we're doing the 10 hours or something like that. Because you're going to have so many things similar in a different department. If you're going to do it in that department, or are you going to do it over here?
What schedule do you guys work?
Four tens.
Everybody that works four tens is where we have our problems.
We should also invite maintenance, or the courthouse maintenance to this. Because they, they get called in occasionally, not like you guys by any means.
They had a flood this weekend.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, questions?
No, that was just it, just to help make us aware of what all is going on so we can start to address it, because we don't have anything that addresses it right now, so.
No, good.
Okay. Talk among your groups, and you can talk together, kind of kind of up with a game plan, and talk with Ryan, so that.
Sorry, I'm just trying to think of all the other departments that might need this.
Order doesn't count.
Bolt on salary.
Well, it's just like in ours, just in our departments of Pub Works, the discussion keeps going around. But it's hard, because you can't just say, okay, this department over here gets something, and then all of a sudden, it gets landfill, then all of a sudden, here's Roland Goodson, why don't we have that? I think it's just that same thing, just on a broader scale, but.
Obviously, this discussion could get pretty broad, so a couple things to think about. One, you mentioned if we impact their lives, right? Like, one of the big things that we used to, that we used to really, is if we tell them they can't drink alcohol. I think about that, if you tell your detectives, if your guy's on-call, he's not going to drink any alcohol. Probably the same with your guys, because they can't come to work, or they can't do their job in toxic, that's where we start taking some of that impact. But if we, if they can't do that, then we need to, then we need to kind of address that. The other issue is, is that if we would look to discipline someone because they failed to come in, right? So when we're talking about snow plow stuff, if we're not paying people to be on-call, and they don't decide to come in- So when we're talking about snowplow stuff, if we're not paying people to be on-call, and they don't decide to come in, do we wanna take action against them? And if we don't have a policy that requires them to be available, then we can't take action against them for not showing up. And so, that, those are just things that, that, think about what the on-call staff does.
That's what needs to come back from you guys, okay? I'm, I'm busy with Ryan, so we have more of a, I don't even say, we're 95% if we.
Yeah.
They have a direction that we're headed, and they have the conversation. All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Dever, Heather, Chantel.
Hello.
Hello there, how are ya?
Good, how are you?
Hello, loving life.
Loving life, huh?
This'll be easier than the last meeting.
You think?
I hear that a lot. Maybe it always ended up that way. All right, go ahead and introduce yourselves, and let's.
Uh, Dever Hunt, uh, one of the owners of Bast LLC, um, that we run the crisis center here in town, um, in a contract with the county, so. Happy to, we haven't been in front of you guys for a while, we've requested an opportunity just to sit down and update you on everything that's going on with the crisis center, so.
And I'm Heather Moore, I'm also the owner of Bast LLC, for all of the same reasons, so. I think, yeah, we did wanna update you guys, you know, kind of what's been going on in our area a little bit, and, you know, with the last advisory board meeting, probably, we made some different announcements and things like that, so, I just thought it would be good to have a conversation of what's going on over there at the city center, which are good themes, all good things, so.
Yeah, good. So I guess the first question is, are there any concerns or issues or anxieties about the crisis center, how it's being utilized? Are we meeting the needs of, I mean, the primary reasons for the crisis center is to reduce hospitalizations in the emergency departments and reduce the times in the jails. And so, I think we have a great relationship with the hospitals as well as law enforcement, with both Chubick PD and Bannock County Sheriff's, as well as Boctello PD, so I think they're all utilizing us well, so.
I believe so.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything that would, you know, that would cause issue, I mean, I haven't had, you know, there, there doesn't seem to be anything that's out there, I've only heard positives right now, so.
Yes, I'm with Commissioner Tavi, I've heard nothing but positives, so. Correct. I know that, um, I think law enforcement is our second-largest referral into the center right now, and I, those are positives. That means law enforcement's finding us as an, as an asset and a referral for them to bring individuals instead of taking them to jail on an ongoing basis, so I think we're meeting the rules, or not the rules, but the expectations of what the crisis center was set for originally, anyway.
Good relationship with the hospital also.
Yeah, yep.
Been very positive.
Mom always said, no news is good news, but I don't know if I always believed that, so.
I feel like we do have a really good working relationship with the hospital, especially with the EDPTC grant that we receive, that really helps bridge any gaps that we have there as far as transportation or any communication with the chief nurse that's on for each shift in the emergency department. We also have, as you know, have Dr. Irwin as advisory board member, and she's been really good for us to reach out to, to consult about various things like where we don't have a prescriber in the facility, she has signed up on some over-the-counter medications. We also have a good working relationship with the free clinic too, so we're able to get individuals medications if they're out or if they have a need.
Haven't physically seen Steve a lot, but he's been on Zoom calls, so, seems like there's good contact with the emergency room and stuff there too.
Are you guys aware of what we're doing with our teen assessment center, and that grant and program that we're doing?
Not, not a lot, so Ernie mentioned the other day, we were talking, that, um, I know that the candidate received that, um, that contract, and so if you could update us on that, that would be great, I know how Idaho Falls is doing that.
They just left.
Okay. Basically, the gist, and this is a very high-level gist, is when youth gets in, in trouble, rather than go, excuse me, straight to the court and to the juvenile detention center, they'll go to this assessment center for an assessment, and then that assessment center is in to try to connect them with the appropriate resource to keep them out of the juvenile detention center. So you guys, I think, would become a very integral part of that resource center that they're tapping families into. And so I would, I would anticipate that you would have a fairly close relationship with them once we get going down that path. Is that how you understand it as well? Okay. I know Heather and I both attended, um, one of the meetings they had in Idaho Falls, where they presented on the assessment centers. And I know that we have also met with Juvenile Justice in regards to their, they're following that up with the Juvenile Crisis Center. And so, I, we received a thing just, um, maybe three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Sounds like a week ago.
That, um, moving forward, they're getting ready to put out the RFP for the juvenile crisis centers across the state. I believe the plan at this point is to put three in to start with, uh, one in Boise, one in North, and one in the, in Eastern Idaho. And so, we're just waiting to see where those pieces come out, I think it's a natural fit for us to, to try to become involved in the juvenile crisis centers as well, where we would probably have a lot of interactions with the assessment centers. So we're trying to keep aware and to be aware of everything that's going on with that. What are the plans with the county in regards to rolling out that service?
I don't know that, yeah.
We're, we're still kinda working on that plan, um, we're in the, we're putting together the plans for a building, which hopefully we can have done within a year. Holding our breath on our fingers and crossing our toes, um, but Todd Boggers, the one that's heading that project up.
So the assessment center isn't up and running yet, it's just in the process?
Yeah, it's gonna get built across the street.
Gotcha.
It's supposed to be built within a year.
Nice.
And we're still having problems with the city of Boctello getting our permitting.
That's true.
And we're gonna put it right here across the street, so it'll be right next to us.
That will be good, we get a lot of questions, or filled a lot of questions at the crisis center for people under the age of 18.
Right.
We don't take any individuals under the age of 18.
Anything that we can do to help, we're always happy to, to chip in any of our expertise, or that we can aid and assist to help the community, help the county, whatever we can do, don't hesitate to ask us, so.
So, well, these two are here, Chantel and Christie, any problems with the billings, the invoices, any concerns, how are we doing there?
I think, from our side, it's going pretty smooth.
I double-checked with Michelle, and she said it's been great, she gets ahold of you guys when there's any questions, and if they're answered, and it's flowing really well.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's been going really smooth for a while now, so I think that's a good thing, we appreciate the timeliness.
That's specifically on the agenda, it's like, we got the, the key people here.
Yeah, we appreciate the timeliness of, of payments, um, it's just, it's gone very smooth, so thank you both.
Chantel's done a really good job running her advisory board, keeping us all on task and organized, and I appreciate that.
I think that's helped us a lot too, on the, on the billing side, is, is having Chantel a part of the process.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And I keep telling myself, I wasn't gonna ask this, but if you're interested in the juvenile crisis, crisis center, the youth crisis center, if you have the okay from D6, sorry, I still kept telling myself, don't ask it, don't ask it, don't ask it. But I had to.
Well, I got to, I listened, right?
Sometimes it just.
I've not requested permission for that, as of yet. I will say that I thought that, um, your leadership in that advisory board meeting, and to try to keep, um, what was pertinent and relevant in focus, I thought you did a good job with that.
Appreciate your comments.
So, I think that sometimes emotionality leads conversations, and I thought that, um, it's not bad, it's not bad to have emotion occasionally. But I think when it all was said and done, I think everything circled around fine, we have, we'll have a great relationship moving forward with D6. I think that actually brought up some good questions, that we're always happy to answer any of those kinds of questions, and so, um, but we have not asked permission.
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't have even said that. Are we recording today? Are we live on, on Facebook?
I appreciate, appreciate all that, we do have the intent to negotiate too, I don't know if you guys have any new information on that?
We haven't heard anything that I know.
The only, um, the only thing I could update on is, assuming everything has followed, followed its timeline, the state should have been involved in negotiations with any of the bidders in July. As far as I know, the plan is to still award that contract to whoever the new managed care organization will be in October. At that point, is kinda what we discussed in our meeting the other day in the advisory board, is how that's gonna roll out, how that's gonna impact different programs, et cetera. We actually, I just signed contracts this morning with Department of Health and Welfare for the STAR program, um, which is early, early mitigation, I can't remember, EMSI. It's early identification of mental health and mental illness, aged 15 to 30-year-olds, and so, specifically psychoses, bipolar, some of your, like, your access-one type diagnoses. So, um, that's one of the first pieces that is changing from the ITN, obviously, the, the state mobile crisis team, the state act teams, the specialty courts, some of the respite care, all of those kinds of things are gonna be, there's just gonna be a lot over the next 18 months that we're all gonna need to figure out together, and so we're happy to sit at the table and do anything we can to help, um, with whatever experience or expertise we have, we'd be happy to help in any of those areas.
So, how are you doing with staffing?
Um, I think right now, I'll let you speak to the staffing side.
Uh, right now, the crisis center is fully staffed, we have had a difficult time with our entry level position as a psych tech, but currently it's staffed with really great employees, and we haven't had any problems for about a month now, probably. We do struggle to get people to fill that medical professional position, um, we prefer having an RN, although, to be honest with you, we hired some really great LPNs, paramedics, and also we have a really good CNA who is in nursing school, who understands the process, we provided her a lot of backup, a lot of different individuals that she can call from here to Idaho Falls to consult with, with, if need be, and I've had a couple of conversations with her, her decision-making skills are right where we need them to be, so, currently, really open positions, um, that we have our one medical professional staff, but we have an interview today, so we'll see if that individual will accept, and then we will for sure be fully staffed in the center with all positions, so that's good. That's good news, it's actually getting better than what we experienced maybe six months ago, as far as getting people to answer ads on Indeed and that type of thing, so.
We did have a rash of COVID that kinda came through again, that impacted, um, our ability to get everything staffed on a regular basis, as well as in the past. But we've been able to keep everything, we haven't ever had difficulties in making sure that there were available staff that could manage whatsoever going on in the facility. We did get a meme from Mirna this morning that just says, "Now hiring anyone that will show up to the interview." And so, just as you guys probably experienced at all levels, that, um, it's hard to get people to even show up for interviews, it seems, so.
And commute after they've, sadly would.
That's, that's actually a thing too, we've had people start and quit, um, as of last Monday, had we met, we would have been down three positions, so we will certainly have filled the full-time psych tech position and case management position, so.
One of the things with COVID, having, um, released our communities, we are able to get out and do a lot more in the communities now. Matt and Mirna have been able to get out and do a lot more, um, and so that helps to refer all sides of things, to make sure that we're penetrating into the community so that people are aware of who we are. Even in Idaho Falls, I mean, we're in our seventh year, and there's still people that don't know who we are or what we do. And so, we're in our third year here, and I think we've, we've reached a great level of, of knowledge for our community to know who we are, but still, you know, anytime you guys can speak about us, we try to do some advertising, Mirna has done a lot with the Hispanic population, where she's been on the radio with the Spanish language, and so some of those kinds of things that we're trying to reach into, that's part of the contract, that we reach into the tribe, and that we reach into Spanish-speaking, um, individuals, and so we're making those efforts on an ongoing basis.
Matt and Mirna have done an excellent job to, um, somehow getting in on the inside of the tribe, because they've been invited to some pretty significant events recently to set up booths and for Matt to present and that type of thing, so they're really utilizing his knowledge and the crisis center and that type of thing to help with some of the problems that they are having on the reservation as far as mental illness and substance use disorder, so that's been really good for, for them.
I agree with you, your staff is pretty amazing here.
They are.
And Matt and Mirna themselves, I mean, they have reached out a lot.
I think the last quarter, we had like 15% of our population were Native American from the tribe, so.
The only area that I, I think that we need to improve on, and, and it's a challenge, is the outlying counties.
Yep.
It's still more of a Bannock County.
I agree.
Power County, we're still kinda right here, uh, and it, it's tough, it's honestly tough, Bear Lake, it's, it's a long ways away.
Yeah, I feel really hopeful with the STAR programs, with Hope and Recovery, because we do have individuals in outlying counties that'll help us to collaborate and know who to talk to and get it worked out, so that'll be good.
Good group over in Caribou County, Hope and Recovery, but.
Yeah, I think, I think bringing that Hope and Recovery, where now they have an active role in and out of the centers, we have, they have an American Falls office, they have the Soda Springs office, they have Reese, um, who is working with Bear Lake County quite a bit. Interesting, just by chance, I did, I don't know if you guys are familiar with SHIELD 616? It's, um, it's a group out of Colorado that helps raise money for rifle-penetrated armor for law enforcement officers. And so I've been involved with them for the last two years, we do a bike ride across the state, we do a border-to-border. So last week, we rode from Jackpot, Nevada to Montana, we did three, um, 380 miles bike riding, bicycles, not motorbikes.
Electric bike?
In four days. Not electric, not electric. But one of the, um, one of the riders that came with us was Bart Hickelstein, I don't remember how to say his last name, he's the sheriff out of Bear Lake.
Oh, okay.
And so I had a lot of opportunities, I rode with him quite a bit over, over last week, um, and trying to, so we're gonna try to partner in with him quite a bit with the Bear Lake as well. So that was a good connection for us to be able to reach into him.
And the more you get Bear Lake and Alnida and Franklin and Caribou, they have the four counties over there that always have joint meetings and do a lot together, and the more we can do with them.
Yeah, Bart was very open, he says, hey, you know, let's, let's sit down, let's look to see how we can help with the transportation into the centers. I know that Reese, who has worked with the Hope and Recovery Center in Soda Springs, is working with the specialty courts in Bear Lake as well. So I think those connections will, will begin to help us reach into some of those smaller areas.
Good. Anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
I don't think so, thanks for everything you guys do to advocate for us, and everybody up there, really, so.
How often would you like us to come and report to you, I mean, I know Ernie, you hear it all, in the advisory board meetings each week, along with Chantel.
I mean, I'd just say more as, as needed, I mean, if, where we have active participation there, if there is issues, it's brought up fairly regularly, I mean, me, I'm not.
I, about every, I don't know, about every four months, probably, it'd be good.
Quarterly?
Yeah, we can do that.
Something like that.
I do know that our contract goes through 4/30, and then 2/23, so that's. That's a good point, depending on what happens with the intent to negotiate and what type of thing.
Does that have a 60-day or a 90-day notice on that, I don't remember, but, uh.
We have the amendment right here, but.
Hopefully by that point, we will know what the MCO is planning a little bit. I do know what the ITN speaks specifically to in regards to the crisis centers, that whoever is the new MCO, whether it's Optum or somebody else, that they're required to work with the crisis centers for two years from the date they take over, as the crisis centers are in place. And so I know that that's already mandated inside of that new ITN that's coming out. How that reflects all the pieces, I don't really know still. But if we met in, what, November, Octo, um, December next time, if they award that in October, we'll at least know who's gonna be the MCO.
So maybe October, maybe then, we'll address that.
All right.
All right.